Yeah. Yeah. Because he looks like a brother. Yeah. Is she here too? She is your license now. I guess I'll tell you the time about it.
Your line, Mr. Chairman.
Recording in progress.
Like to call this March 5th meeting of Greenville County Council to order. I think Dr. Shaw is on the Zoom screen with us. I'd like to ask Councilor Blunt if he would give us the invocation, please.
Let's pray. Dear Lord, thank you for another beautiful day. Thank you for all the blessings that we have here in Greenville County. Pray that you would be with this meeting, be with the agendas, be with the goals we have set out to help the people of Greenville County, in Christ's name we pray, amen.
Amen. If you'll join me for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberative, and just as for all.
All right, next item on the agenda are approval of amendments for the February 20th meeting.
Move approval of the minutes.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Don't believe there are any proclamations or special recognition. So we'll go to appearances for current agenda items. Ms. McCaskill, if you'll call speakers up, please.
Mr. Chairman, your first speaker is Jack Logan. His topic is Item 8B, 8E, and Item 13.
All right, welcome, Jack. Give us your name and address for the record.
Okay, Jack Logan, 5051 Old Augusta Road, Apartment C, Greenville, South Carolina 29605. First, I want to thank Councilman Shaw for helping those children up there at Furman with the soccer, for donating money, and then knowing that security will be there on the soccer field. Also, on the Upstate Healthcare Coalition for the Wilderness First Responders, there was a, some hours that was listed, and by me being a healthcare worker myself, I feel that the first responders need more training than just the hours that was listed on there. Now, on the administrator's contract, I want to see Mr. Canal become a better administrator and overseeing every department. When I've had to call him regarding the tax collector, the parks and recreation, bringing things to his attention that shouldn't be, when the tax collector was sitting over there not sending people's information to the DMV. And I brought that to his attention that this was going on. And he did, he did respond, but I should not have had to do that. Also, with the Parks and Recreation Department, he should know of every event, just like what's going on at any community center. I want to see him look at every supervisor that heads every department for the county of Greenville to assure that safety comes first. I'm all about safety. And also, on the spending of taxpayers' dollars, I know each council member be allotted money for different things. I want to make sure that the administrator put his voice in, maybe give, I don't care if it's you, Mr. Tripp, so maybe Councilman Tripp, we shouldn't do this this way. Let's do it this way, because we have a lot of homeless people, we have a lot of people in need. I know how money have to be dispersed for various reasons. But overall, I'm not here to say fire Joe Canal. I want to see Mr. Canal do a better job as county administrator. And I'll go here and say, I told Representative Shandra Dillard, I'll ask y'all to even increase his pay, because Greenville has grown, the headache is bigger. And, but again, my main thing is, I want this county administrator to oversee everybody, make sure, because nowadays you can't trust people who you put in charge of, named over the Parks and Recreation, that tax collector over there, and all the other agencies in the county. Just want to see him do a better job in leading the people, and I thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Jack.
Mr. Chairman, your next speaker is David Kopp. His topics are 12A, 3, and 4.
Come on up and give us name and address for the record, please.
Yeah. Hello, I'm David Kopp. I live at 12 End of Cocon Lane, Greenville, South Carolina. Thank you for allowing me to speak on the last two items of the agenda. The first item I would like to discuss is the county administrator contract for Joe Canal. I know the county council is aware of the following, but I want them to know that I am also aware. Mr. Canal began his career as a county administrator in 2004 with a salary of around $120,000. Adjusted for inflation, that today that would be worth $196,000. And today, the average salary for a county administrator nationally is $97,000, and in South Carolina it's $133,000. His salary doubled in 10 years to $245,000 in 2014. In 2023, I read his salary was $297,000. He made national news in 2019 on the Associated Press, being the highest-paid county administrator, making $280,000 in 2019, and also on the Greenville News, which I, which I got most of this information from. If you add, if you add his added benefits for employment, which I read other administrators don't come close, you get a picture of a public servant that is really living well. All county employees have a retirement program. He gets an extra 10% based on his, on his salary to invest for retirement. That's about $30,000. He gets a car to drive. He gets 38 days annual leave, he can cash out if he doesn't use them. He gets 12 days a year sick leave with no cap. He gets health insurance. These are just some of the benefits. But one benefit stands out, and it's terrible. According to the Greenville News, he has an auto-renew contract. This auto-renew, renew contract, if not renewed, forces the county to buy him out. In 2019, he gets over a year's, according to Greenville News, he gets over a year's salary plus other benefits that could create to $547,000. He also gets to keep his health insurance for a year. Why is this, why is there such a generous salary and buyout program for this county administrator? Does this county administrator determine his own salary and benefits? And did he put in an outrageous buyout program to ensure a lifetime employment? He does write the budgets. Has the county council advocated the fiduciary responsibility to this man in all things? And is this why the council is now considering a referendum on the ballot to add a sales tax to county residents? This referendum, if successful, will get people to vote to lower their quality of life, to hopefully have better roads and bridges. I oppose such a referendum. Instead, I suggest the following, following. My suggestion is to revisit the budget, remove unnecessary items like affordable housing, and survive into the next budget when you have a new county administrator that will help the council craft a budget that will slowly fix our roads. And finally, if this is going to work, please quit enormous breaks like was done in 2021 for real estate developers. I read that in Greenville News. Stop the fee-in-lie taxes, which are tax breaks. And stop the nonsense like was attempted at Cherokee Landing to give a taxpayer 20 years' worth of millions that could be
Thank you, Mr. Kopp.
Thank you.
Appreciate your comments. Thank you. We have one, one final speaker on the agenda.
Chairman, the last speaker is Laura Allen. Her topic is Item 9F.
Thank you, Ms. Allen. If you'll come up and give us your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Laura Allen, and I live at 38 Meadow Springs Lane in Greer. So I've spoken once before about the issue of giving large tax breaks to giant corporations, but they keep coming in and the approvals keep coming. So tonight, I wanted to specifically speak to the proposed tax break for EnerSys. First of all, they call themselves a multi-billion-dollar global industrial technology enterprise. So they are a multi-billion-dollar company headquartered not in Greenville County, not even in the state of South Carolina, but in Pennsylvania. In their fiscal 2023, which for them ended mid-year 2023, they reported record net sales of $3.7 billion. They have a CEO who received total compensation in 2023 of $7.9 million and has an estimated net worth of at least $28.5 million. So I guess I come back to the question of why we continue to give tax breaks to multi-billion-dollar corporations and not to the residents that actually live here and small business owners that actually give back to the community. Furthermore, it was interesting, I read in a WSPA 7 article, where EnerSys actually said that their goal is to attract engineers to move to the area. So the company is not even pretending to plan to give most of their jobs to people that already live here. They literally are planning to bring people from out of state to move here to work for them. So I would ask, how in any way does this benefit the people that already live here? When the company, the company is not even pretending that they're going to give jobs to local people. They're going to recruit someone out of Clemson, and then what the rest is for rich people that come from New York, California, and wherever else. So all this is doing is providing more jobs for people that are coming from out of state, while we basically, with our tax money, people that already live here and pay into this system, we are propping up a multi-billion-dollar company, bringing people from out of state, that then come here and use our roads and our utilities and put their kids in our schools. And our tax dollars are going to support them and a company that's doing that. Beyond that, I think there's a whole host of other issues with the lithium ion battery plant that I don't know if that's been looked into at all, issues with air and pollution, and soil pollution, and water pollution, and a million other things. And I think a lot of residents are also worried about how that's going to impact our air and water and quality here. So with all that said, I would just say overall that I think I speak for most people in the county when I say that we don't want this here in any way, shape, or form. No one wants this here. We don't want our tax money subsidizing this. And I think it would be a huge disservice to everyone in this room and everyone in this county if you approve it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Allen. Appreciate it. Next item on the agenda are public hearings. First up is Lawrence-Greenville Octagon Industrial Park Agreement Amendment. Chairman Curran.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This public hearing is being held for the purpose of receiving comments from the public regarding an ordinance to amend the master agreement governing the Octagon Industrial Park between Lawrence and Greenville County so as to enlarge the park and add a certain parcel in Lawrence County known as Project Tomahawk. Ms. McCaskill, is anyone signed up to speak at this public hearing?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Curran, no one has signed up for this public hearing.
Chairman, I declare this public hearing closed.
All right. Next item is Anderson-Greenville Industrial Business Park Agreement Amendment, Project Colorful. Chairman Curran.
Yes, sir. This public hearing is being held for the purpose of receiving comments from the public regarding an ordinance to amend an agreement for the development of a joint county industrial and business park, 2010 park of Anderson and Greenville County, so as to enlarge the park and add certain parcels in Anderson County known as Project Colorful. Ms. McCaskill, is anyone signed up to speak at this public hearing?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Curran, no one has signed up for this public hearing.
Thank you. I declare this public hearing closed.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda.
Move approval of the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Would ask that Item 8A be removed from the consent agenda and taken up as committee reports, and an explanation be given as to this being a good use of taxpayer money when we are just reimbursing ourselves. Thank you.
Okay. All those in favor of Consent Agenda 8A through 8D, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is number nine, ordinances at third reading. I'll call on Chairman Phan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Property located on Old Augusta Road Extension and Moonacre Road, Piedmont, requesting rezoning from RM 20 to S1, I move adoption of the ordinance at third reading.
You've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Next item.
CZ 2024-002, property located at 112 South Old White Horse Road and Page Drive, Greenville, requesting rezoning from S1 to R7.5, I move adoption of the ordinance at third reading.
All right. All those in favor of adoption of the ordinance at third reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Item number seven.
CZ 2024-007, property located on Griffin Mill Road, Piedmont, requesting rezoning from RS to R15, I move adoption of the ordinance at third reading.
All right. All those in favor of adoption of the ordinance at third reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Item eight.
CZ 2024-008, property located at 115, 125, and 203 Farmer Circle, Greer, requesting rezoning from FRD to S1, I move adoption of the ordinance at third reading.
All those in favor of adoption of the ordinance at third reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Item 70.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. CZ 2023-070, property located at 109 Tulane Avenue, Greenville, requesting rezoning from R15 to RS, I move adoption of the ordinance at third reading.
Okay. All those in favor of adoption of the ordinance at third reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is Item B, text amendment to amend Article 7. Chairman Phan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move adoption at third reading and ordinance to amend the Greenville County zoning ordinance to amend Article 7, Section 7.3.4, side setbacks in single-family residential districts.
All right. All those in favor of adoption of the ordinance at third reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Item C, Lawrence-Greenville Octagon Industrial Park Agreement Amendment. Chairman Curran.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move for adoption at third reading and ordinance to amend the master agreement governing the Octagon Industrial Park between Lawrence and Greenville County so as to enlarge the park and to add a certain parcel in Lawrence County, Project Tomahawk.
All right. All those in favor of adoption of the ordinance at third reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. The next item on the agenda is Anderson-Greenville Industrial Business Park Agreement Amendment. Chairman Curran.
Yes, sir. I move for adoption at third reading and ordinance to amend an agreement for the development of a joint county industrial and business park, 2010 park of Anderson and Greenville County so as to enlarge the park to add certain parcels in Anderson County, Project Colorful.
All right. All those in favor of adoption of the ordinance at third reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is Greenville County General Obligation Bonds for Twin Chimneys Landfill Project. Chairman Curran.
I move for adoption at third reading and ordinance to provide for the issuance and sale of not exceeding $11,500,000 Greenville County, Greenville County, South Carolina, General Obligations Bond, Series 2024A, to prescribe the purposes for which the proceeds shall be expended to provide for the payment thereof and other matters relating thereto.
All right. All those in favor of the, of the ordinance at third reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Item F, Project Cranberry Sauce. Chairman Curran.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Excuse me. I'd like to comment on this one. It's up for third reading. Public hearing has not been able to be scheduled yet due to a time limitation. Pardon me, pardon me. The law requires that the notice of a public hearing be publicized and notice to the public in so many days prior to a public hearing. It's not uncommon for these things to occur. That has not happened in this case, but the law still requires this item to be on the agenda. So I'll read it at third reading, and then I'll have a supplementary motion to hold this item for two weeks, in which time a public hearing will be scheduled. So, Mr. Chairman, at this time, I move for adoption at third reading and ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of tax agreement binding between Greenville County, South Carolina, and a company known to the county at this time as Project Cranberry Sauce with respect to certain economic development property in the county, whereby such property will be subject to certain payments in lieu of taxes, including the provision of certain special source credits and other matters related thereto. Mr. Chairman, I move to hold this item for two weeks, at which time the public hearing will be scheduled.
All right. All those in favor of holding Item F, Project Cranberry Sauce, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Next item on the agenda are ordinances at second reading. First item, 10A, is Lawrence-Greenville, Greenville Multi-County Industrial Business Park Agreement Amendment. Chairman Curran.
Yes, sir. I move for approval at second reading and ordinance authorizing an agreement to that certain agreement for the development of a joint county industrial and business park binding between Lawrence County, South Carolina, and Greenville County, South Carolina, dated January 31, 2000, to enlarge the park, to add certain property located in Lawrence County, Project Hunter Industrial Park, Building A.
All right. You've heard the motion. Any questions on this motion? All those in favor of adoption of the amendment of the ordinance at second reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Next item is Project Born Special Source Credit Agreement. Chairman Curran.
Mr. Chairman, I move for adoption, excuse me, for approval at second reading and ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of special source credit agreement binding between Greenville County, South Carolina, and companies known to the county at this time as Project Born with respect to certain economic development property in the county, whereby such property will receive certain special source credits in respect to investments in related infrastructure and other matters related thereto.
All right. Motion is approval. Do you have any questions on the motion? Roll call, please. Okay. Any other questions before we go to roll call? And Ms. McCaskill, if you'll call the roll or put the roll up on the screen. Mr. Chairman, can Ms. McCaskill put my vote as a no? So noted. Thank you, Ms. Shaw.
Chairman, you have seven in favor, five opposed.
Okay. The ordinance is adopted at second reading. Next item on the agenda are ordinances at first reading. We've got Item A, Flood Damage Prevention Ordinance Amendment. Chairwoman Seaman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I present for first reading an ordinance to amend the floodways section of the Flood Damage Prevention Ordinance, codified at Section 37 of Chapter 8, Article 2 of the Code of Ordinances of Greenville County, South Carolina.
Okay. That'll stay on the floor. Next item on the agenda are committee reports. And let's go back to the item that was removed from the consent agenda. Item E, the Community Project Application for Furman United Soccer. Ms. Tolleson, is the pending question adoption, or do, does somebody need to make a motion?
It needs a motion, Mr. Shaw.
Mr. Shaw, would you like to make a motion on your, on your item?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I make a motion that council approve this special request.
Okay.
Special project.
Mr. Phan, Dr. Phan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My question is, and I think it's a legitimate one, and it's within the rules, but should we, should we be reimbursing ourselves? If we take taxpayer money, give it to a private entity, and then turn right around and give it back to Parks Rec? Is that a good practice we should be doing? And let me say, and it has nothing to do with the Soccer Team period, so let me just pull that off the table. The practice concerns me. I think about all the little league teams that don't have money to rent fields. And I look at these little kids that practice football and gravel and rocks because they can't afford to pay Parks and Rec. And everybody doesn't have the luxury of having a system to give them money so they can use Parks and Rec. It almost ought to be, should, it should be a system where the public can use what the public pays for, but is it a good practice that we continue to reimburse ourselves? You don't have to say anything. It's just, you can't.
If I can, it does fit into the policy that y'all have in place. It actually gets the county paid for fees for the rental of fields and for some of the entry fees that would normally go to Furman Soccer Club, however, if, if, you know, the people don't have money to pay it. So it, it works for us, because it actually keeps the money with us, and it moves it from one pocket to the other, which is, is helpful. And it does provide a valuable service to the community in the way of recreation and soccer for youth, so.
It's just my hope, and I, and again, it has nothing to do with the Furman Soccer Team. My hope is at some point, we can find a way that teams that are out here struggling, little kids trying to play soccer and football, can have a decent place to practice who don't have the financial resources to reimburse the county for the fields. That's, that's my only concern.
All right. Any other questions?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I was just going to reiterate what I asked at the Finance Committee when we discussed this, that perhaps it would be a good opportunity for the Finance Committee to review our policy, just to make sure that it's still in line with what council wants. And then, you know, going forward, if we need to make any adjustments, we could do so.
All right. So noted.
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Shaw, go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, it's very simple. These are people, parents in need. There's very little places to play soccer in the middle of the county and in the western side of the county. So, you know, one of the things, it's actually one of the items you're allowed to check the box for is reimbursement, you know, this check goes directly to the county rec. And I, you know, I commiserate with Councilman Font, but if he wants to do the same thing, he could spend the $30,000 that he spent on the party, self-grandizing him on the nonprofit that he started. At least this is going to the county.
I'm going to call the question.
Yeah. All right. All those in, okay. Ms. McCaskill, if you'll call the roll.
Mr. Chairman, I vote yes.
Okay. So noted. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, you have 11 in favor, one opposed.
All right. The item is adopted. Next item on the agenda are committee reports. And I'll recognize Chairwoman Seaman from Committee of the Whole report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On behalf of the committee, I move to appoint Deborah Manning from District 19 and William Blair from District 20 to the Greenville County Sheriff's Advisory Board.
All right. All in favor of approval of those nominees, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Next item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On behalf of the committee, I move to appoint Joseph Butler Bostic from District 23 to the Greenville County Citizens Academy.
All right. All in favor of accepting that appointment, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Next item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On behalf of the committee, I move to adopt a resolution creating a commission pursuant to the Capitol Project Sales Tax Act, Title 4, Chapter 10, Article 3 of the Code of Laws of South Carolina, 1976, as amended, providing for the appointment, composition, duties, and responsibilities of such commission, and providing for other matters related thereto.
All right. All those in.
Mr. Chairman, is any, can we have?
Go ahead. Any, you have a question? Comment? Sure.
So as, as we talked about in Committee of the Whole, I, I would like this, I know, I know you can't do it, but I would like this to be where it's strictly for roads. It can't be for, can't be for anything but roads, and we can't put it for any kind of buildings, any stadiums, any other, anything but roads. I'd like that to have been done in this, in this Capitol project. And I, I think that we should really narrow the scope on this. I wish we would do that as a group collectively. I wish we would be able to do that now versus later. And I do think it's rushing, as we talked about. I do think it's rushing this whole thing down too quick. We've introduced it today. Well, tomorrow, we're going to open up the, open it up for new commission members. It closes in a week, and we're going to raise a billion dollars, and we're going to spend a billion dollars with this. So I think it's too fast, and I think that we should have narrowed the scope on this as a council.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison.
Thank you. I actually agree with the first part of Mr. Juvlakis's comments, but I also wanted just to add bridges, just for transparency. I think bridges are also important to be included in this scope. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Bradley.
I would definitely like to see it narrowed in scope.
To just one bridge?
One bridge, yeah. One bridge on the Calvy Road. But roads and bridges, I think if we're going to try to get another penny from our citizens, they need to know exactly, and it can't be changed. I would, and I would disagree with my counterpart on the being rushed. I think we need to get them on the, you know, and citizens are going to vote for this. So it's not left up to us.
Right.
We just give them an adoption. If you want the roads fixed, this is a way to do it.
Yep. Thank you, Ms. Bradley. Mr. Curran.
Firstly, a comment I was going to make in the prior discussion on this is that the county's not going to spend any money on this unless the citizens in a referendum vote to approve it. If they vote not to approve it, that's fine. Has happened before. No money will be spent. If they vote to approve it, it'll only be spent in accordance to the projected revenue and the projects that are listed on the ballot at the time all the voters go to the polls and vote yes or no.
Thank you, Mr. Curran. Any other comments, Mr. Blunt?
I was, I've been advocating for getting this on the ballot because I do trust the citizens of Greenville County. Up until today, I was in favor of citizens of Greenville County. Up until today, I was in favor of doing that, and I just wanted to stress the reason that I can't support this is because, in my opinion, we're the representatives of the citizens of Greenville County, but by adding this commission and the way it's set up, it puts another layer between us, which are the representatives, and the goal. So I'm just concerned about what that could turn into.
Right. Let me just say this. I don't disagree with what you're saying, Mr. Blunt, but I actually think the commission is a good thing in this case because it takes us out of the politics of roads in Greenville County, and it puts it an independent commission in charge of making this. And also, we have the veto power over the report that they ultimately make. In response to what my colleague, Councilman Juvalakis and Rick and Chris have said, I think it would be fair to put a resolution together to the new commissioners, laying out the legislative intent that we foresee in this, because I think we need to send a message. Last thing I'll say is, I want to just give kudos to our staff, T. Coker and Hisha Gamble and their team for doing such a great job, working with the cities around the county, working with the state, compiling the data points that we need to make a good decision. You guys have done a yeoman's job, and I think it's going to help us as we put this commission together to have more of a consensus approach with the cities to get this, get a good report out. But I think that putting together a resolution to the new commission members would be definitely in order. So any other questions on the, Ms. Seaman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to reiterate or let the public know, too, as it relates to the commission and even this whole resolution, it's based on state law. So it wasn't, county council did not make up the rules regarding how the commission is formed. It's based on state law, and we're just, we're following state law. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Barnes?
I think it's the right way to go, is let the citizens decide if they want to do it. It's their roads, just like it's our roads, but let them allow their ones paying, and let them decide if they want it fixed or not.
Thank you, Mr. Barnes. Mr. Phant, Dr. Phant?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think, I like the idea of the resolution to give direction to the commission. I do think it's a good idea to have a layer between us, and it does take the politics out of it, and just let independent people work with staff and try to come up with a good list of roads that need to be evaluated, and then ultimately let the public decide. But I do, and I think it's important that we make clear tonight, that the only thing we're doing tonight is setting up a commission. That is it. We don't want the people standing there already putting a penny on that. We may not even like what the commission comes back. We may not even vote to put it on the ballot. So let's not conflate what we're doing tonight to the bigger picture. All we're doing tonight is authorizing a commission to study the problem, give us a list of roads, and then we can decide yes or no. This is a problem that's worth tackling, or we don't like it, and we just want to keep knocking the front end out of our cars out of line every day. It's just a decision we can decide later.
Thank you, Dr. Phant. Any other questions?
Thank you, Mr. Shaw. Okay, and also, Mr. Shaw, I think might have had a question.
We'll get to your next, Mr. Shaw.
I just wanted to point out that we did have multiple options. We had two options on this, not just the one that we're choosing, but by going with the resolution, we're basically choosing one of those options over the other. So I wasn't opposed to putting it on the ballot for people to choose. It's just that the one we chose, I feel, is just potentially more problems in the future.
And quite candidly, Mr. Blunt, the reason we chose this one is it doesn't tax groceries. The other one does. And, you know, I know there's a movement to amend the state law, but who knows when that'll be done, if ever. And I think there was just a decision made that, you know, for this project, we should not be taxing groceries. So that was, that was, that plus the independence of the commission were the reasons that I think we chose to go down that road.
I think, Mr. Mitchell?
Mr. Shaw is next, actually. Sorry, Dr. Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, this is going to be on the backs of small business. They're the ones who have to collect it. If you take, you know, they're the ones who are going to have to collect it. They become less competitive with other counties and other places. And unfortunately, I've heard the same thing before in the affordable housing thing, where, oh, well, we're just creating a policy. You'll have a chance to vote on it. And from my recollection, every one of those has passed, maybe one or two has not, has not. But this is the camel's nose in the tent, and any salesperson knows, you get the camel's nose in, and the camel gets a little comfortable. That's why all the comforting tone of, oh, don't worry, this is just, we're not doing anything, we're not spending any money. But this is all just part of a pattern that even the press has seen for a year now. Everything that's been done by council has led up to create this. And there are other options. We could lower ad valorem tax. We could take the eleven million dollars and spend it better. And this was all part of the budget debate. We just raised, we just made the greatest, largest tax increase in the history of Greenville County, and within months, we're doing it again here. Now, you can say it's up to the voters, but in my, my impression here is that we had other ways to do this, and we just took this way of doing it, which is really not doing our job. I mean, we're here to prioritize, and money, taxes, it's not just the money you're taking from people. It's you're telling them, we know how to spend your money better than you do, and we will take it from you at the point of a deputy's gun to do things the way we.
Mr. Shaw, that's a little bit pejorative. Please keep it to the facts at hand, facts, not opinions. No, it's not. Facts, not opinions, Mr. Shaw.
No, it is a fact. That's how, that's how a tax sale works. If you don't pay your taxes, it's a tax sale, and the deputy comes out, and you got to get out.
Okay, well, the same thing would happen if you authored a sales tax to lower the property tax. It's a tax swap. It doesn't do anything for the roads, but it's under the point of gun. If you don't pay your taxes, a deputy's going to come and take your property. I mean, that's not a fair assessment. Any other, any other comments?
It forces us to do our job.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Juvalakis.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Mitchell.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Mitchell.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to say for the citizens who were not at the presentation yesterday, there were two options presented. The second option did include transportation, and I just wanted to make it clear that what we're doing tonight is only forming the commission, and the tax that we're proposing is only for roads, but does not cover transportation.
Correct.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Juvalakis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to parlay on what Councilor Blunt said as well. You know, by forming this commission, we're letting, and I know we're supposed to pick them. I get it. But like Mr. Counselor Shaw said, we see how this, we see how this is run many times in this group. And if we, we're going to pick a commission that's unelected, and they're going to make decisions for us, and we're supposed to vote for it up and down, and we see how that works. Like Counselor Shaw says, we have not turned down one affordable housing deal yet, this group. Maybe one, maybe one, excuse me, Mr. Tolleson, maybe a few, but they're not, they're not many, and I doubt we're going to turn this down. So I do not like unelected officials trying to tell us how we need to raise a billion dollars, spend a billion dollars. By the way, we didn't limit how long this is going to be on this, or any of those things, Mr. Chairman and council. We didn't put a limit on it. So I know there's some limits on there, but we don't have a limit on how long this is going to last, or how much raise it's going to raise.
That's not correct.
Okay.
That's not correct. The ballot question would be put up by the commission. It would go either from two years to eight years, two, four, six, or eight. The longest it could be is eight, and then it's over. Just like that sunset provision I put on the septic tanks amendment, this would be over at the end of eight years.
Okay, well, anyway, I still don't, thank you for the clarification. I apologize. But I still don't like the unelected officials who are going to be prioritizing, spending over billions of dollars for our county. So I'll leave it at that.
Let me just correct. You were wrong on facts before. Let me just say again. The commissioners will not spend one red cent. All they will be doing is clerical work to put together a list and draft the language that would go on the ballot, and then it comes to the commission, I mean, to the council. The only people that spend money in this process are the taxpayers of Greenville County, the only people that spend money.
The only, I know, the only, which is the citizens of our.
Right, and they're going to have.
Because they vote on it.
That's right. Mr. Harrison, you have a question or comment?
Yes, I do. Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Chairman. So this is, this is what's, what's wrong with local government. And the problem is, is I hear a lot of problems, a lot of things, well, I don't like this, I don't like that, this is, this is how this should be. I don't like, I don't trust us to pick a committee, but yet, but yet, the alternative I'm hearing is you trusted twelve of us to come up with the road list, but yeah, you don't trust us to come up with a, with a commission, so, to vote on a commission. So I'm just, I'm having trouble finding what the solutions are. We hear, we hear every day, at least I do, every day, people complain about our roads, every single day. And so this is what's wrong with government, is that we finally have an option that the citizens get to vote on, and we're up here just causing a bunch of problems, poking problems, poking holes in it without offering any alternative actual solutions. And I agree with, I appreciate what Mr. Blunt said earlier. I agree with him. There are two options. I want to touch on that, too, that are specifically dedicated for roads. Chairman Tripp mentioned the reasons why I'm in favor of this particular option, because it doesn't tax groceries. But also, one thing we're overlooking is per state law, the actual, if this is passed and if it ends up on the ballot in November, the actual road projects will be listed on the ballot. You see exactly what projects are going to happen. There's no, there's no guessing game. There's no, you know, hidden agenda. There's no, it's there in black and white. So those two things. And also, one other thing I want to mention is the actual numbers. So, and I, and again, I appreciate what Mr. Shaw said, but I want to put actual numbers to it. He brought up budget and all this. If he can find an option that would generate an additional, I think, projected, the one cent sales tax projected would be about a hundred and twenty million dollars annually specifically dedicated for roads. And so if we can find another revenue stream that adds just that for roads, I'm happy to listen to it. But all the stuff you're saying, the math does not add up. It just does not add up. And I know, I know what you're saying, and I appreciate the attempt at some other solutions, but it just doesn't, it just, if you, the math doesn't work. You can say ad valorem, it doesn't work. That would go to operating expenses versus actual to roads. So again, I appreciate the, I'm just getting irritated because this is, this is why, this is why local government gets a bad rap. You try to do something proactive, let the citizens decide their fate and what, how they want to handle it, and it just gets met with all this just, just nonsense. So anyway, that's just, sorry to vent, but that's my, that's why I get irritated, because we try to be proactive and do something good and let the citizens decide, and it just gets met with backlash and just, things that are just false. So anyway, sorry for the rant, but thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Harrison, thank you. Mr. Phant?
This is one time I didn't mind you giving a speech. No, I, and I think Chris makes a great point. We are here to lead. One of the things we found that people calling, like, telling me, like, I'm a child, like, I'm not in favor of the transportation penny. The reason I'm not in favor of the transportation penny, which of everybody on this council, I probably would be the first one in favor of the transportation penny if it had a prayer of passing. It would be just failed leadership on my part to say, let's go for the transportation penny because I like it, even though I know it will fail. We have to be students of history. We know that Greenville County, mostly people who vote are seniors, and we know that they are going to repel against a one, against a tax on groceries. This thing failed miserably in two thousand fourteen because we put a tax on groceries. Why would we go down the same road again, set ourselves up for failure? Yes, I would like to have the transportation penny, but I also know the likelihood of it passing is unlikely. So if the bigger issue is the roads, and we need to fix them with two hundred and fifty thousand people coming over the next twenty years, let's fix them. How do we fix them? We need to go with a way that gives the least path of resistance and what can pass. And a capital penny that goes specifically to roads, that doesn't go to bike trails and buses and, and parks and everything else wishlist that everybody else has, is the, is the, is the way it looks like we have the greatest opportunity to pass. So yes, I would support a transportation penny, but it has a tax on groceries, and the seniors will wear us out about it. So I'm in favor of the capital penny.
Let me just finish up by saying, in Greenville County, we have over four thousand road miles. That includes county, municipal, and state roads. When citizens of Greenville County get up every morning and drive to work, they don't look at it and say, is this a county road? Is this a state road? Is this a municipal road? This proposal would take those four thousand roads and put them in a prioritized manner. By the way, four thousand miles, that's enough to go to the Grand Canyon and back, just to give you a sense of the scale of the number of roads that we have in Greenville County. This would put those roads in priority fashion, and the commission would send us a proposal, and we would put it on the ballot for the voters to decide. The ultimate question that's important today, are we going to do something about the roads, or are we going to sit back and kick the can down the road? My vote is for doing something to improve the roads in Greenville County.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Juvalakis?
Yeah, I'd like to wait, one more comment. This is a good example of government waste, what you just decided, what you just said. Why would we, as a county, want to pave state roads with the money we're making from the county? I don't understand why we would even consider that, and why that wouldn't be in this, in this ordinance. Why would we even consider paving state roads with our county money? I don't understand. I'll tell you why. I'll tell you why. We've got the state, the state is taxing us. They've had the highest tax increase in the history ever, and they're, and they're not caught up. Mr. Brandon with the SEDOT said they can't get caught up, and now we're going to sit here and pave their roads. I don't understand that, Mr. Chairman.
You know why we're going to do it? Because when your constituents get up and drive to school every day, they don't sit there and ask, are we on a county road or a state road? We are going to take a comprehensive approach to solving roads in Greenville County, and if we can leverage our dollars with the state, we're going to try to do that. I think that's very possible in this process, but we're not going to sit there and, and create Cadillac roads in the county and have everybody have to drive over hot roads. The commission, ultimately, we will submit a priority list to the, to the commission, and they will make that determination, and then you have the ability to vote it up or down.
Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Okay, if you'll. No, he called the question, so we're going to have to, we're going to have to vote on that. I know, but that, that's a motion that is of higher precedence than a question, sorry.
Point of information, what is the vote on?
Call the question. Are we going to take a vote, or are we going to continue talking? So if you want to call the question, vote yes. If you want to keep talking, vote no. Calling the question.
I vote yes, we keep talking, keep considering.
Actually, yes is too close. Call the question.
Okay, I vote no. This is far too important.
Mr. Chairman, you have seven in favor, five opposed.
Okay. We will now take a vote on the committee report, item number three. All those in favor of adoption of the committee report. Roll call, please. What are you talking about? Roll call on item twelve, twelve-three? Twelve, yeah, the resolution. Do you want a roll call on that?
Please.
Okay. Ms. McCaskill, if you'll put the roll call up, please.
Madam clerk, excuse me, I was, a no on the call the question, and a no on this, please.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman, you have nine in favor, or excuse me, eight in favor, four opposed.
Okay, the, the resolution is adopted. Next item on the agenda?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On behalf of the committee, I move to authorize the chairman to execute an amendment to Joseph Cornell's contract with Greenville County, the terms of which were reviewed and discussed with the county council during executive session, which provides for, among other things, an extension to his contract through December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four, and a reflection of his current salary.
All those in favor of adoption, twelve A four of the committee report, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. That's adopted. Administrator's report?
Mr. Chairman, members of council, I do have a couple of things here. I wanted to remind council that we are starting the Citizens Academy that you all created next Tuesday at nine AM. The first session.
The first session will basically deal with the internal operations of the county, you know, what we do here and everything, and show them around and all that good stuff. And then each month, we'll do something a little different, for instance, April, we'll have EMS, emergency management, sheriff, and detention. May has animal care and recreation, June, courts, Alton Road. We're off July, August. Now, you may want to think about this one, August, we will tour Vehicle Service Center, and we'll have lunch at the landfill, so think about lunch at the landfill in August. September, we'll introduce them to the elected officials. Of course, county councils invited to all the sessions, just please let us know so we can accommodate lunch and whatever else, transportation, things like that. Excuse me, I do want to thank you all for extending my contract, you know, we've had a, I think, a good, good amount of time getting some good things done, and we still have a lot more to do, and I look forward to working with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Administrator. I think we got one final motion.
Move, we adjourn.
All those in favor, say aye, those opposed?